Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'll get started here. Hope you're all doing well. First, tonight is the August 27th, 2018 zoning and land regulation meeting. First, I'm going to introduce the committee and the staff. Sure. Can everybody hear me? Or I'll move closer to the mic. How's that? Everybody hearing me now? Okay. All right. I'm going to introduce the members of the committee first. To my far right, we have Supervisor Steve Peters. To his left, we have youth governance member Julia Ammon. And next to Julia, we have Heidi Wegleitner, Supervisor Heidi Wegleitner. I'm the chair, Jerry Bolling. And next to me, we have Supervisor Kristen Adet. And staff, over back at the back table there, we have Planning and Development Director Todd Vialanti. And we have zoning administrator Roger Lane, who you've probably, many of you have probably had dealings with already. And Dan Eversen is not here tonight. And I forgot to mention that one member of the committee, Jason Canole, could not be here tonight. So we'll be doing this without him. Next on the agenda is public comment for any matter not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not on the agenda will have five minutes to speak. The issue may be placed on a future agenda to allow the committee to discuss the issue. Does anyone want to speak at this time? Okay, we'll move on.
Oh, I think he wants to speak.
Oh, Roger's doing a great job. We already know that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. And first, I'm going to go over some, we're going to call them rules, but they're just forms of etiquette that will make the meeting move a lot more smoothly. This is a public hearing. And hopefully, you've all, if you want to speak, you've filled out a white form over there. If you haven't, go grab one and fill it out during the meeting and give it to Roger Lane. When a petition is called, you'll be asked to come up to the table here. You can have a seat, you can stand, it's up to you. You state your name, your address, your request, and the reasons for the request. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Then we'll be calling for any other people wishing to speak in favor. And after that, anyone wishing to speak in opposition. If there is opposition and someone speaks, the petitioner will be given three minutes to have a rebuttal on that. All speakers will address the committee. And remember, just be very respectful. Any persons that are disruptive, well, you won't be given any recess after this meeting, so. The committee will not take action on a petition until the town action has been submitted to the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action to the county is Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony, again, this is a public hearing, so the testimony taken at this meeting, if the town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a future meeting. If there is opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting. This will give the petitioner, the opposition, and the staff time to work out matters between the parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there's no opposition, the committee may act on the, will undoubtedly act on the petition and refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes the zoning petition unanimously, your presence is not required at the county board meeting. However, if the zoning petition is controversial or there has been an objection, it may be in your better interest to attend the county board meeting. If the committee takes action on a conditional use permit or a CUP, that's, action is final. And if there's no action by the county board. The zoning petitions, which are recommended for approval, will be placed on a September 5th county board agenda for action. The next ZLR meeting is Tuesday, September 10th. So are there any questions on anything that I just indicated? I hear none, I see no hands, so we'll move right into the petitions. Oh, we got two minutes, yeah, thank you.
Motion to approve minutes. No, that's thirteen. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on the minutes?
That's not on the agenda.
Consideration.
Yeah, it'll be, at the work meetings, we'll have those. And it'll be attached to those.
Okay, I saw.
Thank you. That explains why I couldn't find them.
Okay.
They're on there.
Huh?
That's explaining why I can't find them.
Okay, yes, I always put them on the work meeting. And then there'll be two of those. Or would you like them to be on the very next meeting?
Whatever is most convenient.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm just doing. Okay, I'll put the next minutes.
Okay.
Or the minutes onto the next agenda.
Okay, we'll move into the agenda now. Or the petitions, I should say. As soon as I get them up here, we can start. There we go. First petition is rezone number 11444, Robert Lang. How you doing, Robert?
Good.
How can I help you tonight?
Yes, so I'm looking to, Robert Lang, I'm looking to exercise changing my agland and putting a building site on that 5A or, or that 2 up front there, residential site, make that art.
Very good. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Dunkirk unfortunately has not acted on this petition yet.
Okay. And according to our rules, at this time, we'll postpone it till the next meeting. So if I could please have a motion from the committee.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's postponed until September 5th?
Okay.
Or September 10th.
September, yes.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to rezone number 11451, Galena Powers. Hi. Come on up. How are you tonight?
Good, you're solid.
No complaints?
Good. My name is Thaddeus Garlowski, and I'm the potential purchaser of this property. So Galena, the powers and us have been neighbors for approximately, since 1991. We're looking to purchase that property. There's some barns on it that, at that point, at this point in their lives, they're not going to re, not going to fix them up. They're just going to fall apart and fall down. We offered to purchase them so we could fix them up and not have them fall down, since we both share that property line, she agreed to sell it, and so here we are, the rezone.
Very good. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Christiana has unfortunately not acted on this petition. They will be acting on it in early September.
Okay.
So someone needs to go to the meeting, because I think unfortunately, someone didn't show up the last time.
All right. And of course, again, according to our rules, we're going to postpone this until the town takes action. So could I please have a motion from the committee?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, it's postponed until September 10th.
Got you, thank you.
Thanks for showing up tonight. Rezone number 11452. Joel Grant. Welcome, Joel.
Welcome. Oh, there's 451.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is next.
Let's, Joel, you're here.
Okay.
Just do it. We'll go back to Ryan.
All right. My name's Joel Grant, president of Maple Leaf Inc. So regarding petition 11452, I'm looking to get 13.72 acres from A4 and move it into HC to expand our landscape business, store materials, bulk materials for our jobs, brick, et cetera, boulders.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Verona has approved this petition. They approved it with some conditions. The conditions are listed in your staff report. There is one change to item 1D, the outdoor sales limited to landscaping materials. That should be excluded from the conditions, because that is not part of what the town has approved. And the applicant will not be selling anything on that property.
And you're agreeing with this?
Yes, I agree.
Yes. So there are three conditions, suggested conditions to be placed on the petition.
Okay. Would someone from the committee like to make a motion?
Move to approve the conditions.
And a second, please. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all. Okay, almost, we almost.
Sorry. Can you explain, you said 1D should be stripped in?
Yes, that's correct. That was the outdoor sales.
Okay, and that, that's what you're talking about in the first part of the staff report? So that's not permitted at all?
Yes.
And so it's being taken out?
I'm sorry, I should have explained some of the staff stuff here. So the town of Verona has approved this with the understanding for general commercial. So the general commercial zoning districts is for commercial activity that's primarily indoors. The Maple Leaf landscaping business is primary outdoors, because they have a lot of vehicles, they have a lot of outside storage, so it really didn't fit into that zoning category. So staff is suggesting that the petition follow through under heavy commercial. And heavy commercial would be limited to specific land uses. And the specific land uses that could occur on this property are very limited. In item 1, the agriculture, agricultural uses, if they want to plant trees or something like that and propagate a nursery, they could do that. Natural resources, outdoor parking, up to 70 vehicles. Outdoor storage limited to plants and bulk materials, rock, stones, mulch. And also billboards are prohibited. There is a significant existing landscape buffer that buffers the property from the residential area to the west, and that shall be maintained. And there is a site plan that the petitioner has to advise by.
I'll take care of your concerns.
It does.
Very good.
I guess I just want to, well, just to make sure I understand. So this condition would be that this is in the HC? And there are no sales?
That's correct.
Indoor or outdoor?
That's correct.
That's part of your application, okay.
Landscaping, landscaping company, lots of vehicles, and lots of outdoor landscaping stuff stored.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Very good. So we made a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for being here. Now I'm going to skip back to Ryan, dead off. Rezone number 11451. Ryan, I apologize for jumping, jumping over you here.
That's okay. My name is Ron Combs, I'm representing Ryan tonight on this petition. Basically, what's happening is that Ryan owns a parcel to the south now. And there's a large area, environmentally sensitive area in that lower with wetlands, ponds, and steep slopes. Where he planned on building his house was way up at the north end. And when we were doing the work for the house location, we found that the Koshkodan sewer district sewer line goes right through where the house was going to go. So he went to the property owner, requested to purchase additional acreage, and that's the red in the north part there. So we're asking that to be rezoned to RM16, which matches the lot to the north, RM16. And I'm combining those two together on a certified survey memo.
Okay. Is that your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Albion has approved this petition with no conditions.
Would the committee like to bring forward a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for waiting. Move on to petition number 11453, the property owners in the town of Middleton.
Yes, this petition is brought forth by the town of Middleton to correct the town of Middleton new zoning maps. So with the major overhaul of our zoning ordinance, the town adopted the new zoning ordinance along with a new zoning map. And because there's, oh, like, 2,000 parcels or something like that, a few of them got missed. So this petition cleans up a lot of the missed or incorrectly identified zoning districts on the map. We have worked with the town of Middleton to come up with a list of properties. I received the town action report, it's before you tonight, it came in a little late. But the town has approved this. There was some discussions with the latest revision. You have an email there from the town clerk that says, yes, we like all the changes except the late addition, which is the Loffenberg-Hubbard change. The town is concerned that there is a pending certified survey map on this that had issues with the city of Middleton. And they would not like the zoning to be set. They would like to have that on its own merits and have a rezoning petition be set separately in order to change that property. So staff is suggesting, at the town's request, that the changes in the spreadsheet be adopted without the late change on the bottom.
If I remember correctly, that's going to require that we suspend the rules to do that?
Yes, the town act, was the town act, is the town action report part of your packet? Yes, is that part of?
No.
Okay, so yes, you would need to suspend the rules to accept the town's approval.
Okay. Would someone please like to bring that forward?
Suspend the rules to accept the town's action?
And a second, please.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules to include the town action report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then we do have the list of parcels and the zoning district changes to the correct zoning categories. And as I said prior, there was a late addition down there. And the town does not like that. Well, this week, anyway.
Okay. So that means we're going to postpone, correct?
You could, we could.
Could approve it.
You could approve it without the late addition, if you so desire. That's what the town is asking. You do have an email from the town clerk verifying that.
Okay. Well, if they'd like it that way, I wouldn't ask for a motion to do that, to approve without the late addition. And a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? Everybody understand what we're doing? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So they'll come back with the late additions?
The late addition will come back in a few months on its own merits.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have rezone number 11454, Brent and Nick Bradley. Hello again.
Hi there. I'm Brent Bradley, Nick couldn't make it tonight. Petition 11454, I live at 4107 Bannon Road. We are selling our zoning off acre to a neighbor so he can put an orchard in.
Very good. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? I guess everybody likes apples.
Or pears.
Or pears. Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Dinah has approved this petition with no conditions.
And a motion, please, from the committee.
Move to approve.
And a second, I have a second from Supervisor Adet. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Move on now to rezone number 11455, Dakota Gray.
Hello.
Hello. Ron Combs again, 109 West Milwaukee Street. This petition is to rezone to RR8 and add that land to an existing R, single-family residential lot, and increase the lot size.
Okay. Very good. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Albion has approved this petition with no conditions.
And a motion, please, from the committee.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
In the staff report, you noted that future structures will need to avoid environmentally sensitive areas of the property and future commercial area will require a conditional, a conditional use permit. Are you recommending that those be conditions that are added on to this?
No, it's just to make the petitioner aware, the landowner. We like to put that include, we like to include that information in the staff report, because, well, then, we could say, we told you so. So, yes, but it does show that there's wetlands right along the road there that not only will need to be avoided, but stay 75 feet away.
Very good. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor, okay. So again, would it?
Just have a follow-up.
Sure.
And they will need, before those things happen, they would be coming back to the county for approvals on those.
That is correct.
Things, and that's why we don't need it as conditions, it's more just an educational notice, sort of.
That is correct, yes, yes, it's for the applicant, mostly.
Good question. Okay. Do we have a motion yet?
I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries. Thank you, once again. So now we'll move on to rezone number 11456, the Bauer Living Trust.
Yes, I'm representing Bob Bauer tonight.
You're looking familiar.
Yeah, I know. You've been very careful. This is basically a simple transfer between adjoining properties. The property to the east is being sold, and they've agreed to sell a strip to Mr. Bauer to give him some more setback to his driveway.
Very good. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Dunn has approved this petition with one condition. It's conditioned upon a certified survey map being recorded for the property. And that is one of the automatic conditions.
Very good. Any questions or motions?
Just one quick, one quick question, but that would imply that we don't need to.
That's correct. It'll automatically show up on the ordinance amendment, that will be before the full county board.
Right, yes, move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, you can fight over it. Move over, Roger wants to carry with that, he can. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you done yet?
I am done.
Go back and start drawing.
Yeah. Rezone number 11457, Timothy Herbslaw. Did I say that right?
You did.
You did? I tried real, I tried my best.
I'm Nicole.
Sometimes I mess them up pretty good.
I'm Nicole Herbslaw, this is Tim Herbslaw, and we live at 6392 Viaduct Road in the town of Dane. And we would like to move our property line with the adjacent neighbor to make our lot whole. So currently, there's a triangle cutting out of our lot that we don't own. But our kind neighbors have let us use it, but we'd like to actually own it. So doing that would be about 1.3 of an acre. So that 1.3 of an acre is currently RR4. It would have to become RR1 to match our lot.
Very good.
That bumps our neighbor to 3.99. So he would have to go from RR4 to RR2.
Starts the whole domino, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Dane has approved this petition with no conditions.
And questions or motions from the committee, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Rezone number 11458, Buckies.
Hi, yeah?
How you doing?
Good, good.
Good.
Yourself?
I'm, uh.
Okay. What brings you here today?
Well, I'm, today, actually. I don't know why I'm here, actually, because the next one, the Rutland, has to approve it. And then this appointment really didn't amount up to a whole lot.
Well, we still have to have the public hearing, in case somebody, in case somebody wants to object. So.
Well, you want to build a house there, so you're creating a single-family lot, right? And then also, you would like to expand the, your commercial area, so you could put a sign there. Is there anything else that you want to do on the property? Is there anything else that you wanna do on the property?
No, that's it, no.
Oh.
Okay. Any other questions? You understand what's going on, no?
Yeah, I understand, well, yeah, I understa- I understand what's going on, but the, um, the, you know, I guess you gotta go through to town of Rutland first before I come to this stage. And then some things kinda got-
And we gotta courtesy, we won't take action on it until Rutland does.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just in case, uh, there's any of your neighbors that wanna speak in opposition, this is their opportunity time to do that. So, I don't know if there's any of your neighbors out there that you're, or upset with you or anything like that, so, well, we'll, we'll soon see how, when he asks for any opposition, but, um-
When you're done, I'll find out, are you, are you all set?
No, no, no.
Okay, anyone else like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? No? Roger?
Oh.
You're all set.
Uh, unfortunately, the town of Rutland is still working on this petition. So, uh, they requested that it be postponed until they take action on it, yeah.
And, second. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
It's postponed until the tenth.
This portion is over.
We'll see you back on the tenth.
All right.
Well, we'll see you in the June.
Yep. Uh, rezone number one one four five nine, Brent Bratley, once again.
I'm Brent Bratley, at the forty-one oh seven Bannon Road, uh, petition four, or one one four five nine. I wanna rezone this, uh, to a residential so I can sell it to my brother and sister-in-law, two acres.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger?
Uh, yes, the town of Deerfield has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be reported on the balance of the farmland, uh, because the housing density rights will be exhausted.
Very good. Any questions or motions from the committee? Supervisor?
Just a quick question of the applicant, uh, do you understand the condition?
Always, yep, we've done it before on the front.
In that case, move approval with the condition.
And a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know who got that one, Roger, I can't tell you. It was a tie. We'll move on to, uh-
Thank you.
Oh, very welcome. Rezone number one one four six zero, Anthony Henson, town of Vienna.
I'm not Anthony Hen- Henson, but I am Dan Paulson, uh, I'm a surveyor out of the forest. And, uh, what the Hensons are up to is they'd like to add five acres to their existing four point eight acre lot.
Very good. Anyone wishing to speak in, in, in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger?
Yeah, the town of Vienna has approved this petition with no conditions.
And, any motions from the committee, any questions?
Motion, Dan, move.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Rezone number one one four six one, DQ Development.
Yes, this petition has been withdrawn by the applicant. You have an email there from, I believe, Mr. Lawton, uh, that states that, uh, his client would like to withdraw this petition.
Very good.
Shall I place in the minutes, no action taken by committee?
That would be, so, fine.
So, I have a question.
Feel free.
Does that mean it is still out of compliance, then?
I believe there are restrictions on this, uh, property, and I believe there, maybe, if Mr. Lawton is here-
I don't know if we can really ex- we were a buyer, not the current owners, I don't know if we can explain that.
Yes, the, the future buyer wanted to, uh, expand the deed restrictions on the property. So there are limitations on the property right now, that the existing, uh, the existing owner has to abide by.
Okay. So there's no action needed, is there?
Uh, no, not until tomorrow, until we look at the property.
Okay, so we'll just, uh, move right on by it. Petition, rezone number one one four six two, Walter Trow. Good evening.
Aye.
Hey, folks? Pull up a chair.
Sit next to me.
That's nice to see.
All right, we'll get there.
How are you folks today?
Good, good.
Good. How can we help you?
We are, uh, asking for a rezone, uh, to this property in, uh, town of Cottage Grove. It is a, uh, pet kennel and a daycare and cremation facility. We are, my wife and I are prospective buyers, and it, uh, needs to be rezoned, uh, due to the changes in the zoning, uh, that took place several years ago with the sale of the property. So we're asking for rezone to commercial and, um, a conditional use permit for the, the kennel and the pet care facility.
Very good. Would anyone else like to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report?
Yes, the town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition. They conditioned, they, uh, approved it with, uh, a limited, uh, land uses. Uh, they are requesting that the, uh, general commercial be assigned to, uh, the property, and the land uses limited to a veterinarian clinic, domestic pet boarding, pet crematorium, and a single-family caretaker residence.
Very good. Any questions on the conditions? No, okay, would someone on the committee like to bring forward a motion?
Move to approve with condition?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion or any further questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're all set?
It's, here's the next one. There's conditions.
Oh, we've gotta, we gotta go on to the CUP, I'll just stay comfortable. CUP twenty-four seventy-five.
Yeah, the, uh, conditional, uh, use with, uh, for the pet boarding and the single-family residence, um, as well as the crematorium.
Very good. Any questions or motions regarding that? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger, you have a report on this?
Yes, the town of Cottage Grove has approved the conditional use permit. They are suggesting twenty-two conditions be placed on the proposed conditional use permit.
And, uh, could I, I would entertain motions or questions at this time?
Are you familiar with the twenty-two conditions and is that, do they, any questions on them?
Yeah, I did, uh, we, I did read through them and, uh, um, I'm familiar with them.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Um, are you in agreement with the conditions?
Yes, we are, yep.
Move approval with the conditions?
And a second, please. Second. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Is the, uh, was the zoning one unanimous so that we don't necessarily have to be here on the fifth, or what's the recommendation there?
That is the, that is the policy, yep.
Yes, there is no controversy here.
Okay.
Thank you. Retire.
Enjoy your retirement. I think she's happy.
Yeah. Okay, uh, move on to town of Vermont, re- rezone number one one four six three. Other than we can result.
Yes. Oh, yes, so this is, uh, this is brought forth, uh, by the town of Vermont to correct their official zoning maps. Uh, as I stated, uh, prior, the town of, and, and also the town of Vermont has, uh, adopted the new county zoning ordinance as well as a new county zoning map, and they did find a few, uh, mislabeled properties. Uh, this, uh, zoning petition cleans up those properties. The town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Anyone wishing to speak in, uh, support of this? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Would someone from the committee like to bring forward a motion?
Someone.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Excuse me. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, Windsor Horry. Rezone number one one four six four.
Well, everyone's been very brief, and so I apologize on the front end, I have some explaining to do.
Oh, we won't allow that.
First off, I'm Dan Paulson with Paulson and Associates.
Yes.
And I'm here tonight with Bill Paulson, who is the owner of Windsor Horry, and Mike Lawton, and Mike's the attorney of Ruby's owner, Bill, as well. The property that we're talking about is down in the town of, o- over in the town of Cottage Grove. And I thought I would just bring along an exhibit to help you understand where we are at exactly. It's on the west side of the town of Cottage Grove, section eighteen, the green highlighted area. Bill and Mike have been working with the town for a couple of years now to see if they would be willing to amend their comp plan. The reason for the amendment would be to allow some development on this property. The town did in fact, well, last year I believe it was, did in fact modify or amend their, their comp plan. And that comp plan would allow for every dwelling in it eight, uh, individual, uh, new lot sites on, on the actual dwelling unit. So, with that being said, that approved one, that, that approval went through last February. Your committee approved a zoning change into the AT zone, or AT transitional zone, AT thirty-five. And so that's what we're here tonight to talk a little bit about, taking that AT thirty-five and changing the zoning so that we can move forward with, uh, an actual plan. We've been in discussion with the town, and I, see Chris is here tonight as well, and, uh, trying to decide how the layout should look. And as well, we've been talking to the city of Madison, Tim Parks. We went through, uh, a couple of layouts, and we kept modifying it. I didn't bring those 'cause it's, it's past history. And as we were meeting, the town did ask us, why don't you talk to Dane County and find out with the, uh, density study, how many units are actually there? So that brought me in conversation with Pam Andros. Pam and I had a conversation back and forth, she made a determination that there were three dwelling units on the property. I said to Pam, what, well, what does that mean? How many actual lots is, will that grant us? She basically said, the interpretation of the town's comp plan would be up to the town. And then the county would make, weigh in on it after that. So, we had the idea, we have the idea that there would be twenty-four units allowed on this property in the development zone. So I went ahead and put together a layout with twenty-four units on it. Unfortunately, the zoning change we did back in February is this magenta line. And the majority of the lots are south of the line or in the AT zone. Unfortunately, above six lots are north. So instead of asking for the county to say, you know, the zoning description was that bad? No, we're being very realistic in saying, we might wanna do a little massaging, but not expecting you to approve something outside of the AT zone completely. So where does that bring us to? We need to do a whole bunch of zoning changes in order to get ready to do a preliminary plan. This sketch, everything in red is now in the AT zone, and we would ask for it to be changed into the single-family residential zero eight zone. Everything in blue is in the AT zone as well, and that would go into the UTR, or utility transportation and right-of-way. Now we have two other colors here. The mustard, if you will, that is in the FP, or the farmland preservation thirty-five area. So we'd be asking you to adjust the zoning line to include these areas. The mustard area goes into the single-family O eight. And the green area would be from that farmland preservation to the UTR. But, we're not quite done there yet. There is an area, two areas, that are in AT that we don't need, if you will. So instead of keeping those and having an odd zoning between the single-family and the, and the, uh, transportation zoning, we would send them back to the FP thirty-five zones. Consequently, uh, we're looking at sending three point eight acres to the preservation area and asking for point nine six acres. So it's, it's a massaging of that line, so that description, we're not following that description as it was originally. And they said as we were going through, we did have conversations with the township and, or pardon me, with the city. And with these address, these changes and modifications, we addressed some of the concerns that the city had. And that was trend, connections to the, for future development if the city of Madison were to come this way. Other interior, uh, transportation issues. One of the items that were a little more difficult were the width of the lots. You know, this is a, a, or a rule in nature subdivision, so the lots are about nine tenths of an acre. The city doesn't like that with the idea that if sewer, water, curb and gutter sidewalk, wherever to come through this area, would be very expensive on a two-hundred-foot wide lot. So, doing a little brainstorming, we came up with a solution. This is a typical lot, two-hundred feet wide. We're gonna say, we're gonna deed restrict these lots so that the right side, or about a hundred and six feet, would be where the development occurs at this time. The rest would be open space, and if need be, would be used for, on site septic systems. And here's kind of a practical layout, this is an actual house that's been built just in the last couple of years. Seventeen hundred square feet, it's a three-bedroom house, three-car garage. So you can see, it does work with that idea. That way, in the future, if the city, if, and they come through and, and there is an annexation, if there is public improvements included here, each of these owners now would have the ability to divide their lot. They would have cash or some funding in order to pay for those improvements that are going to be required in front of their, their units. If you approve the zoning, or maybe I should say, when you approve the zoning, then we'll be coming back to you with this preliminary plan. So, this is where we are today, but I know we received a staff report, and the staff report is a little bit inconsistent with what I've been saying. So I'm, I'm gonna dump on Mike and let him pick it up from here.
Okay, so we've got a hundred and fourteen point four total acres that Mr. Paulson owns that's in the town of Cottage Grove that includes the area of this rezoning. He's got a substantial area of land that's immediately north of this area to be rezoned. We have proposed, just wanna make it clear, we propose to permanently restrict further development on the balance of the land. So, when you take that into account, and the, uh, things that Dan has mentioned as to how this will tie in with the, uh, future development in the city of Madison to the west, with streets and so on, we think that we're complying with and conforming to all the various plan documents. Uh, the town has a plan, uh, their town board and, uh, their, uh, town plan commission deliberated on this at length. Was at the meetings and they talked about it, and they decided that putting this, uh, land in a zoning classification would allow for a small number of residential lots was consistent with their plan. And I had talked to Pam Andros, just like Dan, but I talked to her separately, and she said, you know, it's the town's plan, and the town can interpret their plan. And the town, in fact, has interpreted their plan to say that this is okay. So, we think we can go ahead with this. Now, in the, uh, uh, and of course, the county has to conform to the town plans with the county's plan. There's references in the, uh- There's references in the staff report, the city's plan. We don't really think that this is inconsistent with the city's plan. The city's planning to the west shows single-family residential in the immediate area that butts up to this, and of course, it may be many, many years before the city gets out there, but that's what their, their plan shows. As far as their major street arrangement, we think we're consistent with their street arrangement. So we just don't think that there is a problem between us and the city as far as what these plans show. I know there was references in the staff report too, maybe there being some conflict, but we, we just don't see that as being the case. Now, it is true, we're gonna be on well and septic, but Dan has explained how someday if, you know, forty years from now, or fifty years from now, Madison takes over this whole area, yes, they could accommodate, the owners of lots out here could accommodate sewer and water, or public sewer and water someday if they wanted to do that at that time. So, we really don't think that there should be much concern about some kind of a conflict with Madison. Now, we've talked to Madison, we've talked to Tim Parks, and Bill and I and Dan talked to him, and of course, reflexively, the staff, of course, doesn't like development in the towns around their boundaries. But, you know, that's not really the policy this county can adopt, because the county's gotta conform to its plan and the town's plan, which do conceivably allow development like this in these areas. So, and of course, Tim said, hey, the latest policy of the plan commission, you know, it's, you got a chance at getting it approved by the Madison Plan Commission. You'll just have to come in with your plat and bring it in and make your arguments. And they are not as dogmatic as Madison used to be when they used to vote down routinely all of these developments on the, on the fringes. So, I don't think we should dwell on, or frankly, worry much about that. Madison can speak up when we come in with our plat and file it under the ETJ land division statutes. I think what this committee should just worry about is the town plan, and Mr. Hampton, the town chairman's gonna be here, I think, to tell you what I've told you, that this is okay with the town, and the county plan, which by statute has to conform to, to the town's plan. So, we just don't feel that there's a, a big problem with Madison, and we think that because the town has said that this is okay with them, it should be okay with the, with the county. Now, there's some technical issues that were raised in the staff report about the TDR ordinance. And I've talked to Todd, and I think it would probably be good for there to be some kind of a staff meeting, you know, with us and the county staff to kind of go over some of those technical points. If the, if the staff says you have to transfer units in, which is referred to in the report, you know, we could split our existing property and transfer it in. I think that's a ridiculous form over substance thing, you know, to have to go through that. And the town doesn't think we need to do it, and so, because the town doesn't think we need to do it, I don't think you should require that either. I think there are some major benefits in this. It's a small plat. It's not a lot of lots. It will give the town some additional tax base. It will permanently preserve a significant amount of farmland in this part of the town. I think it accomplishes, if you go through all the different policy goals of the town plan, which is incorporated in the town plan, I think this project really accomplishes many of those goals, and I don't think it really conflicts with, with any of them. So, we would ask you, when this comes back, we know you're not gonna, you can't approve it tonight because there's issues, but when this comes back, we would ask you to approve it. I think the policy of the, this committee and the county in the last few years has been to work with the towns, not to, you know, unduly get into, you know, battles with them over these kinds of things. And I think this is a good example where the town feels strongly this is good for the town, that the county should go along with it. I don't think the county is violating any principles by, by doing that. So, if you've got questions, we're happy to try to answer them. Oh, one other thing, there's references in the staff report to there being some kind of procedures to resolve conflicts between the town and the city. I looked, I told Todd this, I looked at the city's plan. I don't see any procedure in their, you know, all plans have, you know, statements about, we like to work with our neighbors, you know, but there's no process for resolving that. So I think the answer is to approve this, let us file our plat with the county, the town, and the city. And when it goes over to the city under the ETJ ordinance, we'll deal with that. We'll make our, we'll make our arguments over there and try to satisfy them. And they have their own statutory rights, and they can comment on it at that time. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. And are you Chris Hampton?
He's right back here.
Chris.
We can move out of the way if he wants to come up.
Well, just a second. Don't go yet.
Okay.
Anyone in the committee have questions for any of these gentlemen? Supervisor.
This is the first one. So the TDR rights are coming from the balance of the property to the north?
They're coming from the property to the north, yes. And that was signed with the town board and the town plan commission, and they talked about that thoroughly. And they thought it accomplished all their goals to do that.
Is there any question?
That was my question.
And you can ask Mr. Hampton that too, because he was, he was the town chairman and was part of that discussion.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Hampton, you had, you registered to speak in support.
Good evening, Chris Hampton, thirty-three ten County Road in Town of Cottage Grove. In responding to some of Pam's comments that she wrote in maintaining towns' rural agricultural character, part of our plan says that we are really trying very hard to keep land east of N for agriculture, because that was our largest land base that had been subdivided. And, of course, this land is on our far west side, which butts up to the town of Blooming Grove. The land to the north of this division, like Mike indicated, would be deed restricted, would be, continued to be farmed in some fashion. Farming's changing. It could be small farms versus our larger ones now. The long-term viability of the town, this is on our far western edge, and we understand Blooming Grove's going to disappear too soon. And we have been having conversations with the city of Madison on their planning with cooperative boundary agreement. They've kind of come to a standstill at this point, seeing as how there was a change in the mayor this spring, and we haven't heard back, or they have not heard back from the current mayor if she's willing to continue with that process or not. But they are certainly looking at this land to the east of their current boundary end of Blooming Grove for future development. And when the plan commission and the town board reviewed our town plan, we felt that this did fit with how we wanted our plan to work, and would hope you would agree with our conclusions. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hampton? I guess you're all set, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition with no conditions.
Any questions or motions from the committee, please, this time?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the staff report says recommend for postponement, however. So is that a recommendation?
I would defer to planning and development director, Todd Valente.
That would be our recommendation. I think it would be prudent to take a little more time to talk it through. There are some, some issues that we'd like to reconcile both with, with the town and the applicant, but also communicate directly with the city of Madison's staff to understand their perspective on it. The primary issues that we have is, from a staff perspective, is not so much the designation of this as a, as a development area within the recently amended town plan, but it relates more to how the TDR policy is used. So, especially for our newer members, the way TDR is intended to work is that you have an area within a community, within a town, that is identified for agricultural preservation. And there are other areas that you want, you would, that, that the community, the towns would like to identify rural development. So in concept, what you're doing is transferring development rights that would be allowed in an agricultural preservation area, or what we refer to in the TDR lingo is, is TDR sending areas. And you transfer those then to TDR receiving areas. Those are areas where you support development. So, in basic concept, you know, the, the notion of developing this area would essentially be consistent with the plan. It's more in, in, in how TDR is applied. And the way, right now, the way we're looking at this, until we can talk it through and understand it a little more clearly, is that at face value, it looks as if there is an existing landholding where you're taking splits from one part of that, that parcel and transferring it to another part of that parcel, where you're, you're containing those development rights within an existing parcel and, and landholding. So that's something we're trying to get our heads into and, and wanna talk it through and understand a little more clearly. I know Mike and I talked in the hallway before the meeting. We think it would be proven to talk it through. There's another aspect of it that, that we're recommending that would be consistent with how we do zoning for transfer of development rights, and that would be including an amendment to the zoning application to include, identify this area as a TDR R zoning district. So, the, the notion in that third bullet in the staff recommendation that, that Mike had made reference to in his comments was identifying inconsistencies between the city of Madison and town, and the adopted town plan. So we do wanna talk with city staff directly and understand how they're, they're interpreting this. They're also gonna have approval authority or a very significant role over the subdivision plat. So, it would behoove us to explore those issues, make sure that they're reconciled down the road so we're not teeing something up that, that runs into conflict further down the road. So, so that's what we're requesting postponement. That's our recommendation. And I think we can work together with the applicant and their agents to coordinate a meeting and talk it through and, and come back with some more perspective on it at, at the future meeting.
Comments or questions from the committee at this time? Have you communicated that to the township, your thoughts about postponing?
I don't know if Pam has talked directly with Chris. We have talked with the, with, with the applicant's and, and with the applicant's agent, and, so we, we would hope the town would be included in that meeting.
I was gonna say, hopefully you would invite Chris.
Yeah, I mean, as a courtesy, I think you should.
We, we would, we would welcome that.
We're interpreting your point, so.
Yeah, that's my point, yeah, so.
And the, the town plan is an adopted element of the county plan, and we're all vested. We all have a vested interest, and we're all participants in the decision-making process. So, I think everybody getting on the same page is, is best for all interests involved.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee before we?
I do have a question.
Go right ahead.
About how TDR works. Does TDR work differently in different towns?
It does, yeah. If the town of Cottage Grove's TDR policies are unique to the town of Cottage Grove, and other towns have, it's perhaps, I would say, one of the more complex TDR policies out there. Some towns have a very rudimentary or basic TDR policy that enables rights to be transferred from one part of the town to another part of the town. And it varies from town to town. The underlying zoning, however, within the context of the county zoning ordinance, the TDR R and TDRS zoning district overlays are consistent across all towns.
Thank you for explaining that.
That are under county zone.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Well, one of the unique aspects of the town of Cottage Grove transfer of development rights is that you take a development right in one area, and if you do transfer it, it, it gets reproduced into eight housing density rights. So, that's rather unique to the town of Cottage Grove. Most of the towns, it's a one-to-one ratio.
Hey, thank you, Roger, for, for mentioning that. So at, at face value, in the density study that's in your, in your packet, if we were looking at this independently and just looking at how many development rights would be allowed for this landholding as it existed when the town adopted exclusive axonium in nineteen eighty-two, and for that hundred and fourteen acres, that density study indicates three, three splits or three residential development units would be allowed for that property. So to get to the eighteen, or perhaps to the twenty-four down the road, what we're saying is that there would need to be a transfer involved to get to that multiplier of eight to one. So, if there, at least in the near term, envisioning eighteen, they have three that they can work with, and where you, where are the additional fifteen going to come from? So that's why our staff report is saying, where are the other density units coming from? And the reply is, is that, given that the landholding is really split within the town plan, they're saying that, that those already used that exist on a portion of the property will be transferred to the area identified for development, and thereby you get the multiplier from, just to the fifteen, to the, to the eighteen total. And that's what we're trying to get our, our minds around, is that...
Is that ascending area?
Well, according to the definitions, I believe Pam did agree that it was ascending area, that it was an area identified for agricultural preservation. So, yeah, and, and the applicant has indicated that they're willing to preserve those areas to the north. And where I think there is a basis for discussion and some reasonability to this area being identified as a development area is that there's a residential subdivision further to the south. So, in that sense, I don't, I don't know if we can see it if we pan the aerial upward, but we probably won't capture, I don't know if we have an aerial photo that would capture that. But the area to the south, there is an existing concentration of residential development. So I think there is a, a basis for it. In fact, if you go up, Roger, to the little sub, that picture right there. So the subject property is that one where Roger's cursor is, and then to the south, you can see the northern limit, and then it go, extends further south. So there is some concentration of development out there. And if there is an intent to preserve and maintain in agriculture the area to the north, and, you know, future plans tee it up for development further to the south, depending on what the town's interests are and property owner's interests, you know, that, there's some reasonability to that. But it, at least right now, we're still trying to reconcile this notion of taking from, taking those already used from one portion of a, of a parcel and transferring them to another part of the parcel to get that multiplier. That seems to be, it, it could tee up a precedent whereby property owners are transferring development rights from their own parcels to a different part of the parcel in getting the eight-to-one multiplier, which is a significant multiplier. So that's, that's something we just wanna talk through a little bit further and, and come to some mutual understanding.
Can I answer your question? Any other questions? I saw Mr. Hampton's hand go up.
Yes, just one thing I wanted to comment on. With the land to the north being deed restricted, it gives town, regardless of what we work out with the city of Madison, community separation permanently, because we're gonna count on the county to enforce that deed restriction. And we see that as a benefit.
Thank you. Your comment. Anyone on the committee have further questions or comments? Would someone like to bring forward then a motion to postpone, as advised by staff?
I have one quick additional question.
Doesn't have to be.
Just on that, on that last point. What did you mean by the community separation, given that that's to the north, and the city is coming in from, would presumably be coming in from the west eventually?
Well, as Madison moves to the east, continues to grow, at least we know that, that strip, which we could... at least we know that that strip, which we couldn't afford to buy, but at some point, some developer could buy it and develop it into whatever. But as long as we have this deed restriction with the county enforcing it, it's going to stay open space. It's not going to end up like the open space between Sun Prairie and Madison, where actually, we would actually have some width there.
Further questions?
I just want to comment. I appreciate the willingness of the applicant and staff to work together with this to set up clear precedent for when this comes up in the future. So it's complicated, confusing, so I appreciate everyone's willingness to work together on that.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I don't believe there's a motion on the floor yet.
I'll move to postpone.
A second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank everyone for their testimony. It sure sounds like it, doesn't it? Next, we have petition number 11465. Bosin Living Trust. Hi, Dale.
Hello. Yes, this petition is for 439 US Highway 51. We wish to separate the farmhouse from the existing farm. The lot that we've drawn up includes the well, the septic, and the house. Lot size is 1.17 acres. Because the property is on US 51, there's no right-of-way included in that. The parcel excludes the driveway as we need to continue to use that driveway for farm access. And it's unlikely that we would get another driveway from DOT on Highway 51. A shared driveway access agreement will be developed as part of the sale. The proposed parcel does include some farmland as the septic greenfield is a little bit to the west of the house and separated from the house by some farmland. So that is the proposal.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Reskey? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in support of this? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
The Town of Albion has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting that a shared driveway easement agreement be recorded to allow access for the new parcel.
Any motions from the committee?
Move to a further condition.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, that was part of our plan.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to rezone number 11466, Ultimus Bosin. Bosin?
Yes. Okay, Ultimus Bosin Science Fund. This is a charitable organization that my aunt set up as part of her trust constructions. And at this point, we wish to separate the house from the farmland. The lot that we've drawn up includes the well, the septic, and the house. We kept the lot size small at 1.1 acres, and that's exclusive of the road right-of-way on Tower Drive. Just like the previous parcel, this will need a shared driveway access agreement as the driveway is also used for access to the farm. And that access agreement will be done prior to the sale of the house. It is within the City of Stoughton's extraterritorial jurisdiction area. Both the Stoughton Planning Commission and the Stoughton City Council have approved. The town did request a maintenance clause on the driveway agreement so that the driveway is maintained by the owner of the farm for the residential parcel. And they've set a guideline of any time there's a pot hole more than six inches deep, it should be repaired. So I guess that would be better than most roads in Wisconsin, so.
No doubt.
Anyway, so that's the request.
There you go. Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger?
Yes, the town board has approved this petition conditioned upon a shared driveway agreement being recorded. The town planning commission requested that shared driveway agreement have a maintenance clause so that driveway is maintained by the farm owner or operator for the benefit of the homeowner.
Very good. Any questions or motions from the committee, please?
I have a question. On the staff report, the county health section says that the new boundary for the property should be set to ensure the property has sufficient space for its septic system and future replacement. Has the boundaries been set for those conditions? Or is that something that still needs to be added?
Yes, you may want to add that, that the septic system, that the certified survey map identify the existing septic system and the septic system shall be on the property.
The existing septic system is in the front yard of the house, so it is in fact in the parcel already.
Yes, the health department did not have any knowledge of where it was located since it's so old. So it's, they are concerned that there is a document out there that actually identifies where it is. And a certified survey map is the most appropriate to show where the field is. And if it's in the front, then there's no issues. Sometimes it's in the rear and they saw that their rear yard is kind of limited. So they just want to make sure that it's on the property because having the septic system on another person's property, there's maintenance issues and enforcement issues.
Definitely issues.
So the condition would be to identify within the CSM the existing septic system and that it's within the property?
That is correct.
Very good. Dale, do you understand?
Yeah, we can do that, sir.
All right. Any further questions or motions from the committee?
Move approval of the condition. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dale. Will you repeat again?
Yep.
Carol? Next, we have, we'll move on to rezone number 11467, USB Slater-Dietrich.
Yes, Slater-Dietrich, 10267 County Road Y. Seeking approval to rezone our property from rural residential to limited commercial to better suit its current and future use of running a tree business.
Very good. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the Town of Mesa Maney has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff has prepared the following list of recommended conditions based on the property owner's application. That the commercial uses be limited to the existing tree service business. There'd be no increase to existing outdoor storage, no outdoor speakers or additional outdoor lighting. The property shall be kept to town residential standards, subject to town's concurrence. The primary hours of operation will be eleven, or 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with exceptions for special occasions. And outdoor lighting will be directed within the property.
Everybody understand those conditions? Do you understand, Slater?
Yes, sir.
You okay with it?
I am.
Good. Any questions or motions from the committee, please?
I'll move approval of the conditions.
In a second, please? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this petition? Here again?
I have a question, sorry.
Go right ahead.
It says there's also a CUP with this one that, because there are separate legislative actions by the committee here, does approving or not approving one or the other affect the first, affect each other then?
Zoning has to be assigned to the property before conditional use permits. So they are two separate legislative. One is a legislative process. The conditional use permit is a quasi judicial process. So both matters should be taken up separately.
Okay, I just saw there were some conditions listed on the CUP. So that can be a different resolution than this petition.
That is correct, yes. The rezoning conditions will be in the form of a deed restriction placed on the property. And the conditions of a conditional use permit, that's a separate document, a separate enforcement document.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Any further questions? Anyone have a motion? Or wait, did I ask for...
I mean, a motion.
Okay.
A second then.
Excuse me.
In a second, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So we'll move on now to the CUP, 2476. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this? Slater, go ahead, man.
I'd like to also live on the property and care for the property.
Okay, that works. Again, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger?
Yes, I have tried to contact the new Town of Mesa Maney clerk and they have not submitted the conditional use permit action report. So I apologize for that. But she has just started a few months ago and we're still working on form. So technically, I do not have the town action report for the conditional use permit. It's only for the rezoning petition. I have left a message for her and she has not got back to me. Because I think she only works on Tuesdays.
Okay. Do you understand, Slater, what's going on with this?
Bagley?
Okay, the town clerk didn't send in the paperwork specifically what it said.
We will need to postpone action on the conditional use permit. Okay, until we get the town action. There may be some conditions that the town has imposed on the conditional use permit that we don't know of.
Sure.
So hopefully, I could talk with her when she calls me back.
So we'll be delaying or postponing or delaying this, but go ahead, supervisor.
I'm sorry, we know they have acted, we just don't know what's in the act.
Yes, I know they acted on the rezoning petition because I got that town action report. But I did not receive any town action report for the conditional use permit. And we do have two separate processes and two separate... And I was unable to verify if they approved both at once or what. And so that's where it stands.
So will the rezone, I have to also go through it?
Will continue on.
So that can, they can move forward with that one?
Yes, so the rezoning petition has to go to the county board and also has to go to the county executive. The conditional use permit application ends with the approval or denial of the zoning and land regulation committee, so...
September 5th, we could...
Yes, September 5th. And if I have to drive up there, I will...
I mean, the 10th.
Yes, I'm dealing with...
You said that was mine.
Yes. I'm dealing with a lot of new clerks. There were twelve towns this month that did not send in town action reports.
So, Chris, Slater, unfortunately, you'll have to come back on the 10th, it sounds like.
Not a problem.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to ask her for something.
Okay, so I entertain a motion of postponement at this time.
Move to postpone.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll be postponing. We'll see you back hopefully by the 10th when Roger gets done working with your clerk.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, have a good night.
You too.
Next, we have rezone number 11468, Ulla. I'm not going to tackle that. Thomsen, Thomsen? Hi.
Hi.
How do you pronounce your name?
Ulla.
Ulla.
My first name, Minus Dean Thomsen.
Okay. All right.
And I own the property and the town of the spring, Pleasant Spring, and 2154. 2154, Ringden Road, to the zoning and for the state and A1, A chain to the A2 to allow religious use for the, return toward the temple.
Okay. All right.
For technical...
All right, anyone wishing to speak in support of this? Would anyone like to speak in opposition?
So this is, it's mentioned in the CUP here, so I'll speak now, if that's okay?
We're going to bring that up at the CUP. We're going to be doing that next, so I won't forget about you. So moving... Is somebody else wishing to speak in opposition?
I also have a draft, like combined, so I don't know how exactly to...
I'm sorry, it'd be good. Are you, do you want to speak in opposition of the...
That's right, I'm opposition.
Of the CUP or the rezone?
Neither of them, I'm sorry about my ignorance, but I can see the point, but I will address just the...
The CUP would deal with the business.
Okay, then that would probably be my...
That would be the one?
Yeah.
So we're back to the rezone, 2476. Or no, this is a CUP, isn't it?
No, it's first the rezoning petition. There is a rezoning petition that would amend the property zoning to a zoning district to allow religious uses as a conditional use permit. So that's the first matter.
Okay, 11468. So again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the Town of Springfield has postponed action on this petition. They have some concerns with regards to driveway location. So we do not have town action on the rezoning petition.
Do you understand what he's saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right?
Yes.
So I guess I entertain a motion or questions first and then a motion of postponement when you're done with your questions. If you have any.
Move to postpone. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is postponed until at least the 10th of...
Town action is received.
Okay. Next, we have the CUP, 2477. And what does she explain what you want to do?
I just try to make and turn the property to the temple. But I went to the town of the spring and they asking for me to look the driveway, you know, in and out. But I put in there, they asking me like, how many people? I don't know yet. I just moved, you know, like six month. But Monday to Friday, I don't think it's no, no people go, you know, only Sunday. You know, when I want to outdoor, my community go there, you know, maybe like few car and not at the same time they go there, you know, and like ten, open ten, like five, maybe like couple car go and in out, you know, but I don't have any problem for the parking because it's not too many car right now. And then I talked to the town spring and I say, I don't have enough money, you know, to make, you know, the...
Change.
The hill, you know, I have to pay lots money, you know, I have some more money and I sell the temple to Eagle Five, you know, on Warner Land, right? I turned like eight year ago to make the temple to Eagle Five Warner Land, town of the, town of the Madison. That's the temple. I sold that on December. I got the money, you know, I put the money together... That's, that, that the temple, I sold that on December, I got the money, you know, I put the money together and made the down payment for that property. I only six, seven month now. Yeah, but I apply for the equator app, app, um, um, I pursue, you know, from it turn back to the town. You know, like the paper I give to the son. And then, then I have to make an A-one to A-two, I to allow religious to use the temple. All, all the ten acre, you know, the house on there, only one monk and two monk live there only, you know, like...
One or two monks would live there.
That, that's only, only Sunday, you know, just, just like I go to church, you know, and, and Sunday we go there. But this one is different, it's not the same time that I go to church. You know, different time, you know, that's why I not too worry, you know, about the parking. The parking driveway, it's a bit driveway in there. And then the big cars, I can park like five parking and the front of the house, three parking in there. But I mark, you know, mark on the, on, on, on the lap hand when you go in, Rinden, I go the driveway that there. And then I have the land in there, I want to make the small parking first, like five or ten car, you know, on behind the, the, the Rinden Road and, and, and the driveway. You know, then I ask maybe like a four thousand or ten thousand, they need the money for me, just like grave hole, you know, that parking in there. That, 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 that I thinking, I can do that. And then when Sunday, if people go there, I not use the toilet with the monk, two monk live there in the house, right? And I rent, you know, the, the, the toilet, you know, from the company to put in there.
Oh, okay, so the...
To get start, you know.
The patrons or, uh, the people that are coming to pray, uh, can use the bathroom in the same...
Yeah, outdoor, outdoor, yeah.
Yeah.
On Sunday, then I let them use that toilet there.
The toilet in the single family house where the monks live.
Yeah, every day they, they, they cleaning, the company, you know, to, to get start, you know, to make the money when you go or community go, you know, just like you go to church, they put the money, you know, they donation, you know, and sometime we outside the clinic, you know, we make the food, right? And you go there and eat, you put the money in the bag and we collect, let's be couple meet, I got like couple thousand before medicine donation to me, then I think I can save the money to me.
You would, you would like to make this more of a retreat so that you could have celebrations, a Buddhist celebration so that you could raise money?
Yes, yes.
Uh, to enhance the property?
Yes, just like on Deer Park, right? Deer Park, Kamu deer, temple Oregon, you know, like highway M M.
Oh, and you are a Buddhist temple?
Yeah, they buy only land, they, they bought only land, you know, like over ten acre, they don't have money, you know, almost like thirty-two year now, they just start one building, you know, or the temple in there, but they look nice now, you know. Highway M, right? Before you build an Oregon, now they huge temple. The people around neighborhood there, they share each other, you know, they make the party, you know, like culture, you know, like custom, you know? And sometime they make that farm, you know, like, like festival, farm market, you know?
The farmers market.
They selling to put the money, you know, let you go and they put the money there, they sell in something, just like outdoor.
Very good.
Now I got the, 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 the toilet, you know, the, I ring from the company, set it, but car like big enough for the family, you know, but I worry when the people come, I don't want to use, share with the monk.
You would have portable toilets?
Yeah, I have toilet in the home, I have two, but I don't want people share with the monk, you know? There, they live, only two monk live there, I okay with that in the park, in the parking. This, that, 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 that street parking on the driveway to the garage.
Yes, the town, the town, you'll need to work with the town on the driveway issue, okay? Uh, they, they do, they are concerned with the driveway, it's a very steep driveway. And, uh, they're concerned with, uh, the general public using the steep driveway. So that, that's the major concern of the town right now.
They, they have very good idea, you know, because the up here, right? When you driving, you know, non-stop or what, but I don't think, that's not big like that, my commu- community now, you know, it is, it's not like that, even I am bought through eight oh five waterland, right? The temple, right? Only few car go meditation, you know, you know, in the, in, in, in there, it's not huge yet, you know? But I think, I want to talk really, but my plan I put in here, I really want to do big.
Okay.
You know, the six acre and cornfield, I find want to do the building, you know, and parking there. But I know, I, I thinking, but I don't have money, if I have money, but...
It takes time to develop it.
Yeah, ten acre, that's huge.
Very good.
And also the neighborhood is not close with me, it's far, be- because I learn, I learn long term to get, I go look Deer Park, right, Deer Park, and then, and, 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 and the temple.
Yes.
Chinese temple, and I went to Illinois, I look, all I learned from, they told me don't close with the neighborhood, you know? If our culture, you know, we stay outdoor, not inside the house, you know? When someday and they cook something, just like the backyard, you know, and we share the food, something like that, you know, and...
Sounds very nice.
You're gonna see, you're gonna see.
Thank you.
Hundred twenty-five, hundred twenty-eight temple, loud temple in United States. They start small and get big, big.
Very good, thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and...
So I have to come back, yeah, or what?
We're gonna have to work with the town, okay?
The town?
Yes, the town needs to approve this first and then, uh, you'll come up, uh, again to the, this committee.
Okay, okay, it's fine, it's okay.
Thank you for your...
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you for having me.
No problem.
Matt Hanson, I'm here for him.
Yes. So I'll, I'll speak in, in favor first, and it sounds a little bit weird, so I just wanna help clarify. Sure, sure. Okay, so Matt Hanson, two-nine-eight-zero, Yakes Road, G O E C K S. So I'll just try and help everybody.
Okay.
Um, the residence is in this corner, the crest of the hill is here, but this is kind of a blind hill coming this way. My residence is there, um, he wants to expand, um...
Yes.
Oh, did he go? Um, wants to expand the driveway area here, and I think it says something about worshiping in one of the house buildings right now. But I think the future plan would be to build a temple on the property and a parking lot, so I think that's, you know, bring...
Yes, the, the existing garage, the, the white, uh, existing garage there, uh, will act as their temple for now.
You indicated you wanted to speak in opposition.
I'm going to now.
Okay, all right, go for it.
Okay. So, um, Matt Hanson, two-nine-eight-zero, Yakes Road, just like that for the... So when we choose, when we chose to, um, pick our property to build our forever home, we evaluated the neighborhood for future development that occur, could, could occur around us. Um, hearing the possibility for the temple to be built next door, it's left us with some apprehension because we don't know the growth of congregation, um, that could be there, so we, that's our concern with conditional use permit. Um, as I said, I've met and spoken with some of the parishioners, I feel they're friendly and courteous neighbors, and I also respect, uh, their request to worship on a serene property. Um, I would however like the, the board members to consider my concerns, um, with increased impervious area and especially because of the crest of the hill in this area, if a parking lot was to be here or a temple, um, the runoff would go this way, it's kind of a sensitive road area. So I have just, uh, concerns with, with, uh, broader runoff, that I would be, um, held accountable or, or incur any, any requirements for improvements to the water ditch. Um, I would hope that the town would, uh, the board members would consider the septic needs as an improvement before the conditional, uh, permit is granted. And this one's probably not necessary, but in case there's an increase in water usage and potentially could change my well height, I could incur that cost. Um, and then I was curious and concerned if tax exemptions would occur and I may have to increase tax revenue to township. And then I would just consider how that driveway is entered and also the additional traffic on the road as it is a country road and we're on a pretty steep hill, a blind up road, so thank you.
Did you hear, uh, get all those comments, Roger?
Yes, and I have it in writing.
Okay.
Uh, since this is middle, uh, would the committee like to put this statement into the official record or make a motion?
Yes, uh, we've got one more person waiting to speak in opposition first. Michelle?
Yeah, the role, the role, you got it. Uh, I'm at, uh, two-nine-two-seven, Yakes Road in Pleasant, uh, Springs. I'm, he's at the corner of Yakes and Rinden and I'm on the other, right adjacent to. Um, so, and I apologize if some of this is, is zoning versus the CUP, but, um, so the concerns for, uh, me and my family is the increase in traffic. It is a blind drive, that Yakes Road is you can't see the traffic coming, um, from Kenny Road toward us. So if we were to, um, if you're in our driveway and you're looking at Rinden Road, we can't see anyone coming from the left, they can't see us. Um, and so if we're gonna increase and have twenty or thirty full, you know, if there's one car for the single gentleman that lives there now and we're gonna have now twenty or thirty cars, um, that's a huge increase and potential danger. Um, and he does, he, he had mentioned that there's like five or six cars, I can tell you, uh, matter of factly that it's twenty plus vehicles there, we travel by every Sunday. And it's easily twenty or more cars, they're parked all in the front yard, all in the driveway, all along the side of the driveway on the right and sometimes on Rinden Road.
Thanks.
That's many more than five or six vehicles, um, which is also somewhat concerning because if, he's indicating that it's five or six when there's clearly twenty or thirty, what else might not be, um, told correctly to people, what's actually gonna happen versus what he's, what he's telling us? Um, and we didn't know that he was gonna say five or six cars until we, we met at the, uh, town of Pleasant Springs, uh, planning commission meeting, um, so that there's this discrepancy between reality and what he's indicating is a, is a concern for what might happen in the future as well. Um, so there's the, the blind drive, the increase in traffic. The town of Pleasant Springs was suggesting that they move his driveway then toward Yakes Road, I believe. Um, so it'd be closer to our drive, now you just have two roads that can't see the traffic coming from Kenny. Yeah, they're gonna move it there. Um, and that seems concerning because now you just have twenty or thirty cars that are gonna be making left in there that can't see, that people cannot see when they're coming toward Kenny Road toward Yakes. I don't see how that would improve things. Um, so if you move, that's one issue with moving the driveway, if you move the driveway, also it's gonna be gravel. Uh, we live on a gravel road that's Yakes Road now, and the amount of dust that's stirred up is horrendous. Our cars have just film layers, it's constant. Um, so we're gonna have even more of the dust, the air pollution essentially from, from this increase in cars, um, that we're, we're not interested in having all this extra dust floating everywhere. Um, we're in, the increase in traffic will be noise on the road, just from the traffic, from the cars going by, uh, in addition to the noise of the people that will be out there. Um, they did have a, a fundraising event there and they had, uh, like karaoke going, so speakers and things like this, uh, going. Um, the parking lot, it's for up to a twenty car parking lot right now and we're, uh, concerned about having a parking lot next to our property and how that might negatively affect the property value. And if there's gonna be a parking lot, will they have to illuminate that at night? If they do have to illuminate that, then we're looking at light pollution. And also if that meets the street, when we are again leaving our house at night, we look for the lights of cars coming over the hill to see if there's cars coming, and we hope that they can see our lights in that driveway to help with the whole blind drive situation. Um, let's see, uh, how will this affect our water table if they're gonna have all these extra people pulling from the water? Um, it's minimally, uh, patrolled by police because there's not a big need, uh, there. So if we're gonna have this big insurgency of vehicles, uh, who's going to be watching for speeding for, for other things like that? And, um, unintended consequences such as just litter from a parking lot, somebody opens their car or something flies out, it's all farmland, so that's gonna roll and roll and roll across five acres that then I have to go across and pick up. Um, and other crime that might, uh, be associated with just having like parking lot vandalism, break-ins, and then if crime goes up, that'll again negatively affect the property value potentially. Uh, we're wondering about how this might affect taxes, if it goes to religious uses, then will they not pay as much tax? And will, uh, it need to be made up for by the surrounding land, property owners? Um, he's indicating that he doesn't know how much it might grow, so right now there's twenty or thirty cars. And if this gets approved for twenty car garage or parking lot, could this then in the future be like, well, there's already a parking lot there, why not make it fifty or sixty cars? We have no idea how that'll go. Um, Pleasant Springs always has notices up about how they can't afford their road maintenance. Um, it's a major issue for the town, I think that approving this and having more cars on our road will only require more road maintenance, um, which the, the town can't, can't afford. Oh, and then he had mentioned, uh, just now a farmer's market type situation, this is the first time we're hearing of that. It seems like at each meeting we sort of hear like a new piece of what might be intended. And he did indicate at the, the town of Pleasant Springs meeting that he helps to grow it onto the ten acres right there, right across from our house, so that's our house on Yakes, if you can see the little white tacked right there by the road, Yakes, or the, you know, G O E C K S, that, that's our house. So if he plans to go into that farm field to the right, that's direct, we are directly across from that. This would be potentially sixty feet from our front door, uh, what, what he might do. And he doesn't know what he might do or how big this might get or how many people might be there. So, and again, we don't, uh, not really interested in a huge influx of people and, uh, that sort of thing. I think that's everything. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments, sorry I couldn't...
And again, I'm sorry if it kind of laps between the two, I wasn't exactly sure how to differentiate.
Well, don't worry about it.
Okay.
It's quite all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't always, uh, have a good feel for what's going on either.
Okay.
We have staff to help us with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, I believe those are all the, um, public comments on this petition. Roger, your report?
Uh, yes, the town of Pleasant Springs has postponed action on the conditional use permit with regards to concerns with, uh, access to this site, uh, being used by the public.
Okay.
So we do have, uh, a written testimony here that, uh, per committee rules, if it is to be accepted and placed into the official record, we need a motion regarding that.
Uh, would someone like to bring that motion forward, please?
Someone.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion is now ready to be put in the record. Thank you, Roger. Um, now for the, uh, the postponement. Have a motion, please?
Someone.
And a second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion or questions on this? Hearing on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move on to, uh, CUP twenty-four seventy-four, Daniel Schmidt. Daniel, thank you for your patience, man.
Yeah.
You drew the, uh, short straw tonight, the last one.
I would say so.
Yeah?
Well, you want me to talk first or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up, tell us who you are.
Um, I'm Dan Schmidt, uh, I live at, uh, seventy-six ninety-nine, highway one thirteen, and that's in, uh, Lodi, but Dane County.
Very good.
And I applied for a conditional use permit to, um, it's, well, we have a dairy farm and we pretty much service all of our equipment down there, which comes from silage trucks to semis, to dump trailers, to farm equipment, to dump trucks, to, you know, it's a fairly large farm and we depend on trucks to do most of our hauling around in the area. And, um, it's just that, I guess, I'm applying for a conditional use permit 'cause I guess there's been some complaints that, you know, it's just how it works.
Okay, how many acre farm?
Um, do we, do I own there or in general?
Oh, so you're not farming?
Yes, I farm with my two brothers.
How many acres?
Uh, about thirteen hundred.
That's a nice size.
So it's, you know, we're fairly spread out, which sometimes tractors aren't efficient anymore, so it's come to more, more trucks and then it causes more traffic and...
Okay, all right. So you, uh, you're also servicing trucks, not just your own equipment?
No, they're our trucks.
Or your trucks?
Yes.
All right, very good. Um, anyone wishing to speak?
Cause we don't, uh, you know, we just work on our own stuff there.
Very good, okay. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay.
She puts up a lot.
Well, we don't want to get into that, Julie. I, would anyone like to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report, please.
We did receive a letter of opposition. It's before you tonight with regards to that. The Town of Dane is still reviewing this petition, so we do not have town action on this as of yet.
Very good. Any questions or motions from the committee? Do you understand, because we don't have?
Yeah, their work, their paperwork has to get to you, which keeps everything going.
Very good. So would someone like to make a motion of postponement, please?
Well, I have a, I have a question maybe for Roger, but if we're postponing, then will this come back to, will we be able to address concerns that were raised by the letters of opposition or next time then?
Uh, yes, sir, we should, we should at least point them out to, uh, this evening, the concerns that the committee has.
Well, there's been a claim that the SNS Transit and Schmidt Trucking are also operating from the same location, and there's a lot more business as than is indicated on the CUP.
That was a question.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure.
Sorry.
Okay, so there's three different things that we, we have our semis, which are, let's face it, when you're in a business and you get in an accident, you kind of want to cover your butt a little bit, so you have them licensed and different because let's say all your stuff's gone if it goes bad. So we've split them up. We have Sweetwater Farms, we have SNS Transit, and we have Schmidt Trucking. Schmidt Trucking is with the semis. The straight trucks are all SNS Transit. And there's some dump stuff, like for silage and stuff, that's Sweetwater Farms. And, and we've been, we get culverts from county materials, and we fix our field driveways because we had a complaint that there was culverts on one of our farms, and we use those to fix our field driveways. We just get the rejected ones from county materials when they're busted up. And we have, we bed with freestyle sand, so we have dump trucks. So the cows lay in freestyle sand. It's just, you know, it's like fine screen sand, just like a sandbox. So my bro, we, my brother-in-law has us all his as well. He takes twelve loads a week. We take, what the heck is it? It's, it's eight to twelve depending on the time of year because they kick it out. You know, in certain times of year when it's hot out, they kick more sand out, so therefore you're going to need more. And if you're crowded in your freestyle farms, they obviously have more traffic in and out because there's a competition for the stalls. So the more traffic going in and out, the drag more in and out.
So how many employees are, are, are you saying are going to be working at this location?
This location? There's probably five to seven sometimes, but that's from the other farm too as well because they work there and grease stuff. Yep.
How many ten-wheel trucks are part of it?
Ten.
The dump trucks, the twenty-six cubic yard trucks?
We run seven sometimes, but the eighth one isn't so good, so that one's pretty much, I'd say retired. They're nothing new, so you don't always trust them.
Anything else?
Right.
Yep.
Supervisor Peters, go over your question.
In the concerns we received, there was also mention of like hauling flat metal recycling, or some of those.
We don't haul flat metal.
Any other questions for the applicant? Roger?
Uh, yeah, staff will verify all the information here. We just need more information from the applicant and verify that it is either a, a farm business or if there's other commercial operations.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to bring forward a motion of postponement since there was opposition?
Are we postponing to no town action or opposition?
Sure, no town action, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Who's postponing?
And a second, please.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second and a further discussion. Do you understand why we're postponing this?
Because of the town, not in their paperwork done.
Yep, exactly. All those in favor of postponement?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for waiting tonight.
Okay. So do I have to come back in the next meeting or what's it?
Uh, probably, yes.
Okay.
But we're, we'll dependent upon the town action.
You'll be in communication.
Yeah, we have meetings every two weeks, so as fast as the town could review it and make a decision is as fast as it'll come back to this committee.
Should we reach out to the town?
Yeah, should we talk to the town?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Uh, next up, we have zoning map amendments and CUPs from previous meetings. First one is rezon number one-one-four-zero-six, Stephen Cohen. Stephen or?
Yes. Yes, this petition was postponed at the April thirtieth, twenty nineteen Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. It was postponed due to concerns with the transfer of development rights as well as sensitive environmental features on the property, as well as no town action. Since that time, the town has, the Town of Vermont has worked with the applicant, and what they have come up with is that instead of transferring development rights, they would like to just expand this existing non-conforming property into a larger property. However, there's a lot of sensitive environmental features here. So the town has decided to approve this petition, but there are very limited spaces that they could, I don't think we have, here we go, very limited space which could be developed due to wetland setbacks, floodplain. So there's only a thirty by a hundred building envelope that could actually be developed on the property. The Town of Vermont has approved this petition, conditioned upon a building envelope on the northerly lot to be a thirty by a hundred. On the southerly lot, there is a significant amount of wetlands all along County Highway J J, and it goes well up into the southern portion of that lot. There is no development right that could be assigned to this property, and staff is suggesting that the zoning classification for the now A-two parent eight property, which is deed restricted, that it turns into, the zoning would be conservancy. So to summarize, Brian Standing has summarized this in the memo dated August twenty-first, and basically staff is suggesting that the northern, northerly property be approved to A-two parent four with a thirty by one hundred building envelope outside the sensitive environmental areas, and then the southerly lot be approved and assign the zoning district category of conservancy to protect the sensitive nat, natural environmental features.
Is that your report?
That is my report.
Anyone have any questions for Roger? Is the applicant aware of this conservancy issue?
I believe so. Yes. I, I believe Brian Standing was in contact with him.
Okay. So he's, your recommendation is to rezone that to conservancy then?
That is correct. Currently, it's deed restricted to no building development.
Okay. All right. Any questions or motions from the committee? Supervisor Peters?
Just trying to get my head around kind of conservancy without kind of knowing for sure from the applicant that that's what they were asking, that's what they want.
Well, we could postpone action on this, and, and so I could verify with the landowner. I don't know if the planner that's responsible for the staff report has contacted him.
Would someone like to make an appropriate motion then? It sounds as though postponement may be the way to go.
Another option might be to, I, I would, I would suspect Brian did, but as Roger said, we can't say that for sure, but we could perhaps, if, if the committee wanted to approve it tonight, we could verify before the county board meeting, and then if it, if it hasn't been met with the agreement of the property owner, we could have it sent back from the county board to, you know, until we know that for sure.
Yep.
What, do you think that would be a reasonable way to proceed or what's your recommendation?
I, I would suggest that we postpone it because this is quite the.
Significant enough?
Yeah.
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 Okay. Second, please. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The petition is postponed. Next, we got Robert Regey, rezon number one-one-three-six-four.
Yeah, this petition was postponed at the November twenty-seventh, twenty and eighteen Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. It was postponed due to no town action and also concerns with access onto Highway twelve and eighteen. Since that time, the town has taken action on this petition. However, they did not like the, the home site that was on, what's that road?
Clearview.
Clearview Road. So the initial petition had a home site located here, which the town did not like, and so it was eliminated. The second change was, there was a proposed lot right here with direct access onto U.S. eighteen, U.S. twelve and eighteen. The State Highway Department did not like that access, though they had denied access, so the lot had to be shifted over here. So the certified survey map has been revised to reflect the changes. The Town of Christiana has approved this petition with those amended changes. Since November, the town has actually adopted the new ordinances and new zoning districts, so as you can see that they are, started out as the old zoning districts. So in order to conform with the new zoning district requirements, staff is suggesting that the, the petition be amended as follows, that the thirty-eight point five acres, which is located north of twelve and eighteen, and this is to create two lots over there to reaffirm existing property lines, that that area be changed to F P one Farmland Preservation District to allow lots one and two to be created. And then on the southerly portion, having four point one acres of the S P, F P thirty-five farmland, to be changed to R R two Residential District to create the four, the four acre lot, which is noted as Lot Three.
That's real correct. Thank you.
Did you say R R, R R two, the?
Oh, I'm sorry, R R four. R R four, because it's a little bit over four acres. If it was under four acres, it'd be R R two.
So.
And it all makes sense. The upper right-hand lot, that's fourteen acres, is being purchased by the neighbor to the north, who also owns that lot with the white buildings on it. And so that completes his property. We need to rezone the other side because it's too small to just be on the north side, cut off from the rest of the farm by twelve and eighteen. The four point one acres is a perfectly fine residential lot coming off of a dead-end road called Fadness Road, and the rest of the farmland stays farmland.
Comments, questions, and or motions from the committee? Roger, what is your recommendation on this?
Staff is suggesting that the petition be approved with the staff suggested amendments.
That's what I have here too, so.
Someone?
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And next up, we have rezon number one-one-four-two-seven, Jeff Murkey.
Yes, this petition was re-referred back to the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee by the county board at the request of the applicant in order to make another change to this property. So this originally started out as the last year with the creation of four residential lots. After they were sold, the, the owners came back to Mr. Murkey and actually wanted more land. So a petition was submitted to increase these three lots here so that they would be larger. And then the fourth owner came in and said, hey, I want some more land too. So that was just recently, right before the town, or the county board meeting. So that's why the request was re-referred. So the new layout is quite similar to the last one that was approved with the, that's the last one, with the exception is that this existing lot now is being expanded by five point two acres to make the lot a little under ten acres. So the subdivision plat, because this is going to be five lots in total, will look like that, that we will have, I believe, ten acre lot, a ten acre lot.
Fifteen.
Fifteen acre lot.
Nine and six or something?
Ten acre lot, and then the rest of this will stay under one ownership, and this will be an agricultural lot.
Anyone like that? Are we better off not to hear it from you?
Oh. Roger, thank you. You did a great job explaining that.
You don't get to make another change.
I was so relieved to hear that.
Yeah. So here's where I'm struggling, and I'm looking for some advice. The owner of Lot Two is a commander in the Air Force. He is stationed down in Montgomery, Alabama, and he has been on assignment since the county board meeting.
He contacted me via, uh, telephone and email, submitting the request that he wanted to purchase that land. Since that time, I have been unable to get an offer to purchase from him. So here's where I'm stuck. If I have this approved and he changes his mind before I get that offer to purchase, I'm back here talking to you guys again.
We're nice people.
I know you are, you've been, you've been very accommodating. So, um, I, I guess right now I'm, um, well, I spoke to my attorney just on my way here, and his suggestion was to ask this committee if there's any possible way to have this approved tonight, but also remain the approval that you gave me last month and give me like a week so that I'd have the decision from him. He's back now, apparently. That before the county board meeting, I can say we wanna go with option A or option B.
Would you wanna have a deal like that?
Well, I, 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 I don't know, I, I, I mean, I know you approved last month.
That sounds pretty shaky.
Okay.
I mean, just so many things.
It should, it should, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
May I speak? Thank you. Uh, I think the petition should, should stay in committee until a decision by the applicant is rendered on which one to, that we're reviewing. There can't be like multiple things going to the,
Yeah.
uh, county board. That's, that's just beyond, like, people. That was my first impression also.
So the worst thing that can happen is we approve this, and then you've gotta come back and see us nice folks again.
Right. So I guess what I would like to do then is I would like to, uh, respectfully request that we postpone this and that I can be put on the agenda for the September tenth meeting.
Can do that.
Lovely.
Can I please have a motion of postponement, please? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Jeff.
Thank you. I told Jeff he's gonna muck this up.
Yep.
See you again.
See you in a couple of weeks, thank you all.
Yeah.
I believe you, I believe you when you told me that. Okay, next we have, uh, last but not least, we have petition number twenty-four, Tyrell Basin.
Yes.
Tyrell Properties, twenty-four seventy-three, thanks for your patience.
No problem, thank you guys.
And, uh, this petition was postponed at the July twenty-third, uh, Zoning and Land Regulation Committee, uh, due to no town action. Uh, there was no voices of opposition at that public hearing. Uh, since that time, the town has been working diligently with regards to, uh, reviewing the, uh, haunted, uh, trail as well as the Christmas Village events for, uh, the Tyrell Basin property. And they have approved the, um, conditional use permit with, uh, uh, actually twenty-two, uh, conditions. Uh, they are before you tonight. Uh, I have revised the suggested staff conditions to reflect what the, uh, town has approved. So there's one, number four is eliminated because if he needs more, uh, employees to facilitate the safe parking of, uh, or the safety of the general public, that, that, that was, uh, uh, concerned. Keep in mind that this, uh, conditional use permit is good for two years. Uh, it allows just two events, a haunted tour and a Christmas village with very defined, defined dates and defined times. Um, also, uh, key, um, there is a set decibel limit, uh, not to be exceeded at property boundaries. Also, uh, I'd, um, I believe, uh, twenty-one, uh, it has that the oper- and operations review with the town of Vermont shall take place November twenty-nineteen to, uh, review the haunted tour event. So, uh, the, uh, town of Vermont is working very closely with Tyrell Basin, uh, to create a, uh, a safe, uh, uh, recreational entertainment, uh, area. Uh, and, uh, trying to, uh, respect, uh, uh, the neighborhood.
Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, that's pretty much all of it. Twenty-two conditions, uh, we understand, we're okay with them all. And we'll probably see you in three years for this again.
Very good.
Um, for number seven, the, the decimal, is that, um, a stipulation of who needs to be measuring or paying for that to be measured, or?
Uh, county staff, if there are any complaints, county staff will go out there and measure it.
Okay. So the town can't come and ask the applicant to pay for it or anything? We'd have to go through the county?
Uh, yes, we're the enforcement mechanism, so, uh, it's very easy. iPads, iPhones have very accurate decibel meters. Know by knowledge or experience. Uh, that, uh, yes, it, it will be monitored.
My neighbors are doing a very good job monitoring it, it already, so.
I just wa- didn't know if, you know, this, that was put in there and then if someone could say, I think it's louder than seventy-seven, so you need to go figure out a way to measure.
It regularly stands.
Yeah, yeah. There's, uh, apps on phones that actually, uh, will record all this stuff and actually send you a report via email.
We've, we've actively checked it just because one of our neighbors stands on the property line whenever he can and records and sends Brian or the county reports, so.
Do you have any further questions? Hearing none, would someone like to bring forward a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for your patience tonight. Okay, Roger, let's move on to Platts and CSMs.
Okay, I'm trying to do this here. So, uh, the, the first one before you tonight is the bittersweet preliminary plat. This is for Jeff Morarky. It was the actual applicant there that requested that the, uh, uh, rezoning be postponed, due to not knowing if, uh, this lot here was going to be maintaining a five acre lot or a four acre lot and not expanding or not. The, the subdivision plat, uh, does meet the technical requirements of, um, uh, chapter seventy-five. Each, each lot, uh, need, there is a requirement in the subdivision regulations that, uh, each lot shall maintain a minimum frontage of sixty-six feet. Uh, the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee, the last time, has approved a waiver to allow lots to be created without frontage. There are actually, uh, two lots. This lot and this lot are being created without frontage. They will have a common driveway. Uh, the major reason why this was approved is because it fronts on Highway seventy-three, and, uh, it is a controlled access highway, and, uh, access is limited. So, uh, that has been resolved. Uh, there were no comments from the Wisconsin DOT because of the joint driveways being approved. The county survey ha- surveyor has yet to, um, run closure on all the polygons. Uh, so, uh, it seems like this preliminary plat, uh, meets the technical requirements of the land division regulations. With Mr. Morarky's comments about, uh, postponing action on the rezon, I would suggest that, uh, the preliminary plat be postponed until we know what the zoning, the zoning boundaries are going to be.
Okay. Any questions for Roger on this? I'd entertain a motion of postponement then.
So, second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Albert Trust.
Yes, this petition is in the town of Middleton. Uh, tonight, uh, the, uh, committee has taken action on a rezoning, the blanket rezoning of the town of Middleton. They have excluded one of the, uh, uh, zoning changes. And by coincidence, this is the Hubbard Trust, uh, four lot CSM. Uh, the town, uh, the, uh, city of Middleton did not approve this certified survey map. Uh, so there are some concerns with the town about what the actual reconfiguration of this property will be. Staff is suggesting that this petition, uh, this certified survey map be postponed until we know, um, uh, the outcome of the zoning of the property currently. Uh, the zoning, uh, of the property does not coincide with the zoning, uh, with the, uh, property lines. So with the existing zoning, we would suggest this being denied because zoning is, uh, zoning does not, uh, comply with the lot configuration. So staff would suggest it be postponed.
I thought you said denied.
Well.
So with the current zoning?
With the current zoning.
Since we're not doing the rezon on it yet.
Yes, uh, that's still in flux right now because the town just told me that they didn't wanna do the zoning just yet. So this, I, I would, I'd request that this be postponed
Okay.
to figure that out.
All right.
So, go.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is postponed?
Yep.
Got your motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, fine.